Meeting started. It certainly is good to see everybody here today. This will be my 16th one of these budget meetings. And, I feel wow, Chris. And so, with this, we go through the budget and we're here what schools got to say. Dr. Sears is here. It's good to see him today and some representatives from the school board here. It's good to have y'all. And then some town representatives, city representatives, county representatives here. It's good to see y'all and have everybody here today and all of that. And we'll talk about that just a little bit more here in a couple of minutes. But we are really encouraged today about our public meeting and good to see each and everybody here. So I'm gonna ask Supervisor Mike Carter if he'll open us in a word of prayer and then Supervisor Dan Quinn if he'll lead in the pledge to the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to see everybody here today on this beautiful spring day. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings you've bestowed upon us this new spring day. And we ask that you hold us all in your hand in your prayers moving forward. A lot of work before us today. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now I know I'm proud today for, I know a lot of you, especially the board members have been asking me. Today, I didn't bring my bodyguard with me. I drove today myself. It's the first time, the first time I've been out by myself since July the 29th, 2024. That's the day that I had that aorta dissection. That's the day, to tell you the truth, that's the day I was the God's favorite child. Because for all intents and purposes, I shouldn't be here. But I'm here and for that, I'm very appreciative and very thankful for. Now, our agenda today, we only have two things on our agenda. Dr. Sears is gonna open it up with his budget presentation and then Chris is going to close it with the county's budget presentation. So with that being said, do we need any agenda to the, any amendments to the agenda? That's it. Those two things. No agenda, no, none? Or do I need a motion that we accept it?
I will, Mr. Chair.
And I need a second?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. Sears, it's all yours, my friend. Be kind and nice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is based on the presentation that has already been presented twice at the joint meetings, so we won't go bullet by bullet, but we'll try to hit the high points and then answer any questions that the board may have. We have discussed the fact that we have a trend line that is still projected to decline in regard to our student enrollment. Historically, our enrollment runs a little higher than what the projections are, but for, in order to build a conservative budget, we build it off of those projected declining enrollment numbers. And you can see there that it's projected to drop 84 or 86 more students this year into next year. Our enrollment as of February 28th was 58, 38 though, so it was still almost 50 higher than what we had budgeted for this year. The projected state revenue, we have, let's see. That's all just on the cross, that's all the budget work, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. And none of that has changed. The direct date, this is all the state budget increasing by fully removing the support cap, which is something that educators have been advocating for since 2009 when it was, when that change was made. That restores $222 million to the state education budget, which is a huge boost for school divisions across the state. When all is said and done, we are projecting an increase in state funding for FY26 of This still is not approved, but that, these are the numbers we're working off of because this is from the crossover budget and we assume that it will be signed by the governor at some point in the near future. For our budget proposal, what we are asking for, the board has been, first of all, to explain our budget process, we have input from all of our principals, all of our directors, and that is taken to the board. And there were a number of positions that were requested and items that were requested that were screened out because we think we can handle those through attrition or making adjustments elsewhere. What we have here are the remaining budget priorities that the board was considering in this budget season as part of their request. So for year three of the compensation study, that came in a little over three and a half million. This board is very much aware that that has been a priority for a few years now to try to get all three phases of the compensation study put in place to help bring our employees whole who had their salaries frozen for seven years during that 20-year time period. We also have several positions such as our nurses that are paid well below market value. And so, an additional study was done on those positions. And in order to bring them up to market value, that had a dollar amount of $368,000. The bonus is a little bit of a gray area because that funding is going to come in with, it has to be paid out by June 30th, so even though it was included in this year's budget bill, it would be funded, I mean included in next year's budget bill, it would need to be funded this year. So we're still waiting for some more guidance on that and how that might work. But if we are going to request the money for the bonus, that would need to come in as additional appropriation for this year, not out of next year's budget. The budget also contains additional funding for school construction grants. I don't think the CTE project would be far enough along to actually file for that this year, but we don't know all the specifics. And if there is the opportunity to file for some design work, that might be something we want to pursue in a few months, once we know whether or not the ModuCraft site is going to be a viable location and we're moving forward with that. Funding for the elimination support cap and special education add-on. See, like everyone, we're still trying to work our way through inflation and rising cost. The increase for the health insurance, that is another big part of our budget this year. But the board approved last night to go to Healthkeepers, which does reduce the increase. But we are still going to have an increase of 6.93% and for the local share of that would come to $448,000. The remaining share would have to be absorbed by the employees. And even though any type of increase is bad, there are school divisions that are looking at 20% to 30% increases this year. So comparatively, we're in good shape, but that still doesn't help a lot when you're trying to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars to make ends meet. So the remaining budget priorities that the board has been working through are three additional positions and offering bus age health benefits. Those are part-time folks who currently do not receive any benefits, six paid days off a year. Those are the only benefits those folks have. And here's the budget by category. Would you like to talk about this?
This is the state budget by category. Well, actually, it's included the state, the county contribution and the federal. The state revenue is expected to increase by four point, 1.47 million. The federal, as you can see, has been reduced slightly by 40,000. And what we're asking for from the county is an additional 3.7 to cover the Phase 3, the priorities and the increase in health insurance, and then an additional 300,000 in our capital fund to cover the cost of car rider, extending the car rider line at Suntag because that is a traffic hazard when the kids are coming and going. Which would bring our total estimated operating budget for next year to $103 million. Again, we went over the graphs before showing the funding. You know, of course, the state funds used to be much higher, the percentage, and with the drop in the LCI, it puts more pressure on the county to provide funding for the school system. And again, you can see that instruction takes up the majority of our budget, which is mostly salaries for our instructional staff. That's 71% of our budget. These are our proposed capital improvement plans, the driver's ad range, the parking rider line at Suntag, bus replacements, which you know is always in a need. Currently, we're replacing three buses a year. We probably need about 12. And with the increasing cost of buses, the 340,000 will probably only get us two buses next year.
Excuse me just, excuse me just a second.
Yep.
How much does a bus cost?
The last ones we ordered were 172,000.
172,000?
That include, that's with all of the radio equipment and everything.
Well, it's complete then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. We're also, it takes six to nine months to actually get a bus, once we order them. So, yeah. Again, with the health insurance, you know, everybody's premiums are going up. We did switch to Healthkeepers last night. We had to make minimum plan changes. We did increase the HSA deductible from 3,000 to 3,500, which the IRS was requiring not to be increased to 3,300 anyway, so we went a little above that. But still keeping the basic plan design the same for our employees. And again, these are our budget initiatives. And then the car rider line at Suntag is an additional capital need.
And the increase, local increase for the health insurance premiums are also included in that.
Good enough.
I would just like to say, we know that that is a huge ask, but we also know last year, found out that our practice was not to make the Board of Supervisors aware of what our needs are, especially when it came to capital needs. And, you know, at least the way I look at things, if we weren't making you all aware of it and asking for it, then it's on us, the fact that some of these things were falling into such a bad state of disrepair. So we created what we feel is a needs-based budget. We know that you all have your processes to go through and you're all, you have your budget challenges as well. So we appreciate the work that you have ahead and understand that you're in a difficult situation. And our ask doesn't make your jobs any easier, but we feel like we need to communicate that. After we have vetted everything, this is what we feel like we need to make the school division run as good as it possibly can for next year. We understand that that, it doesn't always work out that way and we have, we will have to make adjustments at some point based on what funding can be provided. But we did want the Board of Supervisors to be aware that these are our identified needs and this is what it would take for us to make it happen.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for questions here in just a minute, but as it has been in the past, I don't look for it to be a whole lot of questions today. We got a lot to absorb and to go through, and the questions will come in a couple of weeks from now.
Okay.
So with all of that being said, if you don't get any questions today, don't get too excited, because they will be coming later on.
Okay.
But has anybody got anything that they got to have today?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair. Just a real quick one. Dr. Sears, does the, with your total ask, does that include that you all have added in the additional state allocation? That's been worked up?
Yes, yes.
In consideration of the ask?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Jim? Dr. Sears, on your health plan, how much, what percent is the employee picking up on that?
We currently pay 71% and the employees pay 29% of a single policy. So that increase would be absorbed, but with those same percentages, the locality or the school division would pick up 71% and the employees would be picking up 29% of the increase.
How about the family plans? How do y'all do that?
I'm sorry?
I will let Sharon.
I'm sorry?
The family plans?
Mm-hmm. Family plans, we pay the same amount to the employer's coverage regardless of what plan they have. So unfortunately, our single coverage for our employees is pretty reasonable, but if you have family coverage, our employees do struggle to cover that. So the 79, 29 split is based on single coverage.
Right.
And that's what we give. So if you have family, you're paying more of that cost. And it depends on what plan you choose as to how much you are paying.
Okay.
Does that help?
Don't worry. You know, what is the cost for a family plan? For an employee?
If they're on the, if they're on the $2,000 plan, deductible plan, I think it's $1,300 a month. Do not hold me to that, but it's, it's gotta be, it's over, well over $1,000. So, you know, our employees do struggle with they have family coverage.
So y'all pick up more?
No, we pay the same amount for every employee. The employee, we pay 71% of the single plan for every employee. If they get a family plan or employee spouse plan, they pay the entire difference.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question. You all are self-insured, correct?
Yes.
What do you hold in that pot of money or escrow or whatever you call it? What's the figure on that?
It's 2.3 million right now, I think. Do you have the number right up there? And it's basically to cover our IBNR in case, if the plan ever went out of existence to cover the claims runoff that comes out.
Okay, thank you.
It was more last year, which is why we were able to do a premium freeze last year and not increase them. But this year, that, the fund balance in the account has dropped some, so, which is why we have to increase premiums in order to try to get that built back up and also cover any claims that are made next year.
Anyone else? Dr. Sears, I want to thank you and your staff for this letter dated March the 7th that you sent us in the ModuCraft property in support of that. I wanted to thank you for that today.
Thank you. We were happy to do it, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody's got a copy of it. Vice Chair passed it out a while ago, so. Thank you, and I'm sure there'll be more questions coming in the near future.
Absolutely. Just let me know when you would like an answer and we'll be happy to come back or respond in writing.
That's probably what'll happen. We'll get Mr. Whitlow a set of date and you'll come back and we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have a good day.
You too.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break now before Mr. Whitlow's gonna get ready for his.
The county side?
Mr. Whitlow?
Yeah.
It's your turn, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let all the board members get their seats.
They're coming.
I'm surprised they're not outside. It's such a beautiful day today. Tough afternoon to be inside.
I heard that.
I heard that.
I don't know if everybody else heard it or not.
Well, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Smith, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Today, members of the board, it's good to be.
Is that your birthday?
Yes.
Oh, didn't know it was your birthday.
Well, it's, you know.
You get a discounted McDonald's today then?
Yay!
Medicare?
No, I am not on Medicare.
Getting Medicare?
That's the third one this year.
Oh, my goodness.
Third one this year.
Yeah, y'all are really funny.
I didn't know it was your birthday.
Yes, I'm sorry to say.
We might have to sing happy birthday.
Oh, my gosh, no.
Yeah, we might have to do that.
I just seem to be another day.
We're gonna see how, if Chris makes us mad, we might have to sing happy birthday before we leave.
Y'all are too kind. Thank you, Mr. Whitlow.
Sure. Well, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for telling us, Mike. I mean, Chris.
You're a troublemaker.
Sure, sure. No worries. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Sears, and I believe we have a school board member here with us, Ms. Greer, good to see you, and school staff and county staff and maybe those watching. It's a pleasure to present to you today the proposed Franklin County 2526 budget. Before I get into proposing that budget, I'd like to talk a little bit about the budgetary climate. Now, this is gonna be redundant for the board members. You've all heard this in your last few work sessions, but for the sake of the public and those listening, thought it's important we reviewed the budgetary climate that we're in. What does our revenue growth trends look like? Well, as we've already shared with the board, our revenue growth is moderating significantly so, and it's really returning to historical norms prior to COVID. What does that mean? It's going to mean less reliance on our surplus revenue for recurring capital maintenance and infrastructure needs. It also means that we stay sharp in our revenue projections to make sure we continue to ensure our long-term fiscal stability of the county. The budget climate also is dealing with persistent inflationary pressures. We've talked about many of these, the rising cost impact nationwide on businesses, citizens, but also governments, county operations, capital projects, fuel, materials, personnel expenses. And with that comes a strategic cost management measure that we look at mitigating these inflationary impacts. The budget climate, and I think Dr. Sears already mentioned before, essentially, General Assembly looking with those amendments, approximately $2 million in additional school funding, and I think when you discount some of the other items that Dr. Sears mentioned in terms of the one-time bonus perhaps and some of those other figures, approximately 1.4 million after you discount those other different variances in the, in the state support for schools. But that is only if those budget amendments hold. And we, the challenge with budgets specifically for localities, really, the state budgets increasingly so are not put to rest until April, sometimes May, as we've seen the last couple of years. And so that's, that's a challenge for us in navigating the budget. You've heard us say many times before, in last year, budgets are moving targets. While they are proposed, they are flexible, they can be amended, they can be adjusted. And so I think we have to keep that in mind as we go forward. What does that mean in terms of state funding to localities? Well, as we've had a chance to look at the state budget, really, local governments are receiving really limited additional financial support this year from the state. And that includes both the governor's budget as well as the House and the Senate versions of the budget. And that means, translates, an increased pressure on the local side of the budget, specifically on our revenues and how we balance everything. Want to drill down specific pressures in translating these pressures. From an operational environment standpoint, there is an additional 5.2 million in operational request from our various county departments, constitutional officers, an additional 800,000, 768,000 in new position request. You'll recognize many of these, and some of those requests are fixed in terms of inflation, fuel, utilities, maintenance service contracts, whether it be on computers, software, et cetera. Our CSA, our Child Services Act, very high, complex cases continue to drive that budget. Most of those costs are mandated, often court-ordered from the courts. We continue to see a decline in school enrollment. We've talked about keeping our eye next year on LCI and what that may impact on the county. Of course, we're continuing to see increased juvenile detention population increase. The phase N of SROs, that's something we've talked about in recent budget work sessions. That cost is coming. As these grants graduate, we have to pick up those local costs. And then, of course, all of the other label costs that we've mentioned, COLAs, cost of living, health insurance, all of those things. But it's not only pressures on the operational environment, the capital environment. An additional $13.9 million were requested among all of our county departments above and beyond our current recurring ongoing revenue, primarily to fund capital maintenance expenses that are recurring, fleets, apparatus, ambulances. You're gonna hear me talk a lot about that again today, as you have in previous years. And so, all that being said, budget climate, budget pressures, how are we going to continue to build for the future of Franklin County? Keeping in mind all of those different challenges before us. Well, what I'll tell you is, we build it, one block, one brick, one ambulance, one paramedic, one library bookshelf, one garbage truck at a time, and we incrementally work. We roll our sleeves up, and that's what we've continued to do. That's what previous boards have continued to do. That's what staff has continued to do. That's what we will continue to do. And so, a strong budget requires a strong foundation. And so what are some of those building blocks of a strong foundation as we look at a budget? Well, it's a balanced budget. The Code of Virginia requires it. Commonwealth of Virginia requires it. Unfortunately, the United States government prints their own money. We do not have that luxury. And so, local budget, we get all the luxury, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, of these unfunded mandates, but yet we get no ability to print the money. And so we have to get the revenue somehow to fund these things. So it's very important that we maintain our essential services while also keeping in mind the fiscal responsibility and making sure that our expenditures and our projected revenues align, but we also minimize the financial impact on citizens. Another major block is prioritizing life safety. That's a primary function of local government. I know it's a primary function of this board, fire, EMS, law enforcement, emergency management, that we maintain and we enhance our emergency response capabilities, that we provide necessary resources for law enforcement, fire, EMS. Mr. Mitchell, that when we dial 911, someone is going to come to the fire or come to, come to the home, that we address staffing, equipment, and facility needs to improve life safety. Another major block is the support and enhancement of our educational opportunities. A strong community, a strong economy really revolves around its educational system. And so, how do we continue to invest in our public school system to support our students' success? Not only our kids, but also our adults and adult learners to make sure that we advance workforce training opportunities for those in our community. Another major block, how do we balance our low tax rates with the growing service demands here in the county? Well, we do it through, again, prudent fiscal management, identifying and addressing our infrastructure needs. But we also have to be very mindful and identify cost-saving measures where we can. We've shared some of those in previous work sessions where there's opportunities and we have identified some, to make efficiency improvements. That's a recurring theme, as you will hear, in Franklin County. And that we provide the revenue growth. And it may be modest, but the importance of that to meet our service demands that continue to increase in the county. Very foundational building blocks as part of the budget is also the other blocks that really keep and tie everything together. And that's really our strategic plan focus areas. Of course, the Board of Supervisors held your work session back in September. We reviewed our strategic plan, our strategic vision, our strategic priority areas. The board reaffirmed those strategic priorities. And this budget looks to address those, and I'm gonna walk you, the board, through these in building, if you will, upon the strategic plan in Franklin County and building this Those are the strategic areas laid out for you, and I will point out that as it reads in part of this vision statement, that the county can and should perfect a balance of remaining a low-cost place to live while offering cutting-edge services requested by residents and making investments in our economy, our residents, and our staff. And that is a guiding principle certainly for us as staff and certainly this budget. So, let's look at building. What does building dynamic community safety look like in the proposed fiscal year 26 budget? Well, in the proposed budget, this budget does support recruitment and retention of our trained first responders. It works to improve emergency response times and our station coverages. It continues to address our structural imbalance, specifically in the public safety capital area by enhancing our annual funding for ambulance and fire apparatus replacement. The proposed budget advances the repair and the replacement needed for our emergency radio system. It funds our sheriff's vehicle replacement and mobile video camera program. The proposed budget helps us plan for our new E911 dispatch center while also continuing a very robust support of our volunteer companies and squads. And this is just a sample of many of the things in the budget. The devil, as they say, is always in the details, and I know we'll have an The devil, as they say, is always in the details, and I know we'll have an opportunity to dig into the budget and get into those details with more of the line items in upcoming work sessions, but I'm just giving you a sample today of what this budget does. In many cases, it sustains existing funding, in some areas, it does increase some funding for, just like I mentioned, in terms of addressing the structural capital imbalance. It also works to build enhanced educational opportunities here in the county by providing safety funding for school resource officers, phasing that in and beginning that phasing now where we do not get caught two or three years from now and we have not planned for that expenditure. It also increases support for our school operating budget, thereby working to advance their market compensation program. The proposed budget continues to address aging school bus replacement needs, as mentioned earlier in the school's presentation. And the budget, the proposed budget enhances higher education and workforce training programs. And you can see there, on the bottom left, the Franklin Center. The staff at the Franklin Center and county staff has worked really, really hard over the last eight months, in many cases with our school system during the day for some enhanced dual enrollment courses at the Franklin Center for workforce, but also in the evenings with workforce programs. We have seen an increase in offerings at the Franklin Center like we have not seen in many, many years, Patrick and Henry Community College, Virginia Western, to really make sure that we are aligning our workforce needs with educational opportunities. The proposed budget also builds upon our conservation and the promotion of our natural assets. Our tagline is Franklin County, a natural setting for opportunity. And I know that's a big part of our identity here in Franklin County, so it's very important to us, and it was important to the board. And so, the proposed budget continues to advance our outdoor brand and related marketing initiatives. The proposed budget supports recurring maintenance of our many county parks and related facilities. It invests in the library, continues to build upon capacity as we look to replace our bookmobile here in the future. It supports tourism-related events and activities, and I'll just highlight one in May, a shameless plug, but for the first time in Franklin County, Major League Fishing will hold their tournament here in Franklin County. That is a major, the major, national championship fishing as part of the fishing league tournaments to be held here in May, will be broadcast over multiple days. That's just one, not to be outdone by June, where we will host at Wade Park, the state mountain bike championships here in Franklin County. So, I know that's a big part of our identity, our natural assets, and promoting and conserving, and allowing our citizens to enjoy the beautiful outdoors here in Franklin County, but it's also a big driver in our economy and our tourism efforts. The budget also continues to support a robust program of offerings for our seniors and youth athletics. I think I mentioned last year, our youth athletics programs, winter athletics are at record levels. We have a lot of youth participating in Franklin County, not to be outdone by our seniors at the Essex Center, which I think is a model really for senior services really in Virginia, the work and the efforts that have been done there over the last couple of years. This budget continues to support and sustain those services. In addition, the proposed 26 budget builds upon well-planned growth. We've spent a lot of time, this board strategically, previous boards diligently, planning Franklin County over many, many years for success. And that includes the continued support of our comprehensive plan update, the support of our zoning ordinance update, our village planning initiatives, our new housing opportunities and programs, as well as our transportation infrastructure planning. And finally, it advances our utilities, working with the Western Virginia Water Authority where we can, and opportunities to expand water and sewer, and looking at certainly building out of broadband here in Franklin County, not only in our designated growth areas, but throughout all of Franklin County. The budget also builds upon economic development efforts, including continuing support of our existing business retention and expansion programs. Eighty percent of all new jobs and economic growth come from existing businesses. And I know Danny Power, Economic Development Director, as well as Carly Foster, our Workforce Director, have been really busy over the last several months, out in the field, visiting businesses, matching those businesses, what are your needs, what are your workforce needs, and then bringing those back through small business development programs, et cetera. This budget continues to support their efforts. It also works to align those industry needs, as I mentioned, with skilled-trained program offerings as we look, not only to prepare programs at the Franklin Center, but as we look ahead for career technical education center planning, and the opportunities there with our school system that we are so looking forward to. In addition, the budget looks to plan for essential infrastructure needs. It's not all about an industrial or a business park. It's very much about village growth, village plans, commercial growth, residential growth. And so, where we can leverage, where we can seek opportunities to enhance those, to provide economic prosperity to developers looking to invest here in Franklin County. And then, one of the primary, I guess, focuses of any government is responsible government operations. And so, our budget, as proposed, will continue to work to maintain and enhance our county's financial health. As we all know, the county's bond rating, just one notch below AAA, is the highest in Western Virginia. That's just one of the rating agencies. All three, of course, are now, Moody's was the latest to give us an upgrade back in December. We're now all rating agencies one notch below AAA. I know that's a big part of management through the years of the county, good, sound financial management and health of previous boards, and so, we want to work to maintain that. We are a pay-as-we-go community, and it's important that we keep that in mind, that we pay for our needs, and this budget looks to address that. The proposed budget also plans for recurring and capital infrastructure needs. It supports community partnerships and services, funds inflationary costs, recognizes and attains efficiencies, and it supports our most valued, and that's our county personnel. You can see some of the accolades this last year, just a few. So, all that said, how do we do that with the resources that we have, with the efficiencies that we may need to put all these blocks and all these things together? Well, through some operational efficiencies. So, we've spent considerable amount of time over the last several months combing over various departments, departmental directors. The budget team has met with the department directors, reviewed budgets. As I mentioned, there were many, many new requests above and beyond the current year. So, most of those requests we're not going to be able to get to. So, 4.7 million have been cut from those requests. We're not necessarily going to be able to fund any new positions within this year's budget that we foresee at this point. Not only looking at for new requests, we went back and looked at the current budget, the current year that we're in now. Where could we find some efficiencies and savings? One of the saving graces, if you will, of this budget, and in years past, it's been one of, you've heard me say in years past, this is one of the primary budget pressures, and that's the increase of correctional costs due to increase in inmates at the regional jail. Thankfully, the last couple of years, our inmate population has decreased and it's moderated. And so, a significant portion of the 1.4 million that we've identified in some savings is from that very reduction. Thankfully, good fortune there. However, I will tell you, there remains budgetary challenges beyond that to fund all the other pressures that we have, and you've seen many of those. So, how do we maintain our current service levels with moderating revenues here in Franklin County? This budget will look certainly to fund our board commitments and priorities, including the SROs and first responder staffing that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, but that's a challenge. It's also a challenge as we need to support our school system with needed school bus replacements and other operational needs. And then, really, one of the significant challenges, and we made a large dent in this last year, and that was addressing the recurring capital structural imbalance. As I mentioned earlier, we had 13.9 million in new capital request, but we have 3.7 million in recurring capital annually. Fortunately, last year, we had some good fortune of the carryover. If the board remembered, we were able to balance that budget with some carryover. We're not expecting a lot of carryover or surplus this year. So, you can see the chart here in the graph, the requests are always there, and then you can see last year, FY 24-25, yeah, we were able to do some things there, and that was good. But it doesn't go to solve the structural capital imbalance. It goes towards helping solve it, but it doesn't necessarily completely solve it. And so, this budget will work to do several things. Structural imbalance specifically, as proposed, is an additional capital funding of $750,000 in our capital fund, and that will look to support ambulances, fire truck, those heavy recurring capital expenses that continue to increase that we have each year. It does try and puts a small dent, but a dent nonetheless, in school bus replacement as recommended of additional 150,000. The phase-in of the SRO program for our school system to provide the school system the SROs as the grants expire. And then, some operational support to our school system. I think you've heard Dr. Sears in his presentation earlier. Hopefully, state funding will be there, but then also, to help supplement that, is an additional 500,000. You can see some others. I will not read through all of these. We have a really good detailed summary chart analysis in the budget books that you're going to have before you, but you can see some of the other increases. A lot of these are inflationary, such as I mentioned earlier, CSA, insurance increases and so forth. We have discussed the county health employee insurance increase, it's approximately 15%. We are looking to share a portion of that percentage increase potentially with our employees this year. It's just a, it's a big number. Now, that said, our health insurance consultant will be with us next Tuesday during your board meeting in a work session where we'll really have that opportunity. I know some of you had questions earlier with our school system. Our consultant will be here with us to explain our renewal, the RFP, and really provide some more detail. There may be other opportunities there as we talk with our consultant, as we get further into the budget work sessions. Then you can see other increases, utilities, et cetera, and you see that large decrease there. It's nice to have a decrease or a credit, if you will, from the regional jail. So, those are the expenses, good snapshot of those additional expenses. What about the corresponding revenue to pay for those? You will see those there, and there's been some increases. I've noted the public service corporation tax. You'll see that change over of $1 million in personal property, a decrease of 890. Essentially, that is where personal property was being calculated for the pipeline under personal property. It will now be under the State Corporation Commission Corporation Tax. I know Supervisor Carter, you had mentioned previously regarding the Mountain Valley Pipeline, big gamble for us. We hope to receive anticipated, we were very conservative in our projections, basically level funding because we truly do not know what that number's going to be just yet. And so, big gamble to base a budget and present a budget off of. You will see other modest increases in other general property taxes, sales taxes, and so forth, fines and fortiturs, Commonwealth of Virginia, all of these are just different, various funding sources, all totaling with the corresponding revenue with the corresponding expenditure increase areas. All that said, you'll see two that stand out. The fiscal year '26, to be able to provide you a balanced budget, as proposed, is a one-cent real estate tax increase as well as a 2% meals tax increase. And so, I will say, with the real estate tax increase, you'll see there some of the surrounding localities and the tax rates with meals tax. I will also say it corresponds directly with our municipalities, both Boone's Mill and Rocky Mount currently have a 6% meals tax, as well as some of the other surrounding localities. But I realize that. I realize a tax increase, no matter which way, a rate increase, no matter how modest it is, it's still a tax increase. So, from a real estate standpoint, how do we look over the last 40 years, 41, 42 years? The proposed tax rate of 44 cents is still at record-low levels. In fact, it's still a 10 cents below the 41-year average here in Franklin County. Now, what I'll tell you is, while that may be a one-cent tax increase, and I recognize that it is, the value that Franklin County citizens, and hopefully, we all, receive at 43 and 44 compared to those other localities, but also really for our own services, over the last 40, 41 years, we've increased our services, we've increased our responsiveness to our citizens, fire, EMS, law enforcement, parks and rec, we can go through, et cetera. All the while, we've enjoyed significant low real estate tax rate. That said, a tax rate increase is a tax rate increase. So, what does that look like? This is just one scenario on a $250,000 home as an example. It's about $2 or so a month, 25 a year, and I know that's going to vary, and this is just a scenario, just to put things into perspective. For meals, very similar, $10 meal, $50 meal, just to put things into perspective. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the devil will be in all of those line item details, and there's a lot. We've done some analytics. Mr. Quinn, I know you had asked previously last year, you know, for some data, comparison data and so forth. We have, I think, a chart this year, or handout, if you will, in the proposed budget that will be very beneficial, I think, to you and members of the board as well as our citizens. We present to you a balanced budget of a real estate property tax rate increase from 43 to 44, a modest meals increase from 40 to 6%. All other tax rates, as proposed, remain unchanged. The overall 185 million-plus budget, it's about 3.5% increase year over year. This is a proposed structurally measured and balanced budget with new revenue, modest revenue, that balances our ongoing capital and operational expenses. It continues to work toward addressing that reoccurring structural imbalance. Again, made some progress last year, know we need to continue down that path as well as prepare for the phase-in of SROs. All the while, knowing this really is, even with those revenues, a maintenance of effort budget. It funds those mandated and inflationary cost increases. The proposed budget maintains our existing county services. There are no full-time positions, again, funded in this position. It does provide for a 3% cost of living adjustment as provided by the Commonwealth, as well as a call share for the increase in employee health insurance. Here's a snapshot of the dollar bill in terms of the percentages of where the dollar goes, or where the tax dollars go, rather, into the budget, as well as a corresponding revenue, where the revenues come from, from various sources. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next steps, this budget will be presented on the county website listed later today. We'll have copies at our libraries, copies both in admin office and finance. Our next budget work session is scheduled for next Tuesday afternoon during our regular board meeting in the afternoon, and then any budget work sessions thereafter, later into March and early April, where we will look to tentatively have our budget and tax rate public hearings on April the 8th, with tentative budget and tax rate adoption on April the 15th. And caveat there is, with our twice-year tax collections, the importance for Ms. Torrance and the Commissioner's office to have those tax rates and so forth already set by mid-April so she can get the tax tickets and work with the Treasurer, who I believe was in the audience earlier, Susan, in the mail. So, appreciation, really sincere appreciation of county staff and constitutional officers, everyone in the development of the budget, and the board in your previous work sessions. It's been helpful and to give us guidance as well as the school system. And then, I would answer any questions that you may have. I know our staff is going now to pass out the budget books to you. There'll be a lot of information in there, I know, to mull over, over the coming days, and we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. We've got staff just getting ready to hand out our books. There's a lot of information in there, and it's going to take a little while to absorb that and go over. If there's any particular question that you got, Mr. Whitlow, today, go ahead and ask it, but it's probably as was done in the past, if you'll notify Madam Clerk and let her with your questions, and then she can give them to Chris and the staff, and they'll have time and by, by next Tuesday, next Tuesday, everyone will have time to have read their book, like you said. Everybody will have had time to have studied their book and gone over, because this, this long school board, there's a whole lot to absorb. But if you've got any questions that you just got asked today.
Chris, while we have you and Dr. Sears in the room, of this proposed one-cent tax increase, what all does that include of the school board's asks?
The overall budget, Mr. Mitchell, I couldn't necessarily say the proposed tax increase has tied anything specific. increase is tied to anything specific. So, the tax rate increase is funded the entire budget, but again, for the school system, 500,000 in new operational support to the school system, approximately 100,000 plus for the phase-in of the SROs in support of the school system, as well as an additional 150,000 for school bus replacements.
So does it cover their step three of their pay plan?
I could not answer that question, Mr. Mitchell. I'm not in the details of the school's system's pay plan and their ask, but that may take some more discussions with the schools, and a lot of that is dependent on ultimately how much likely, and I don't want to speak for the schools, how much the state will actually come through, or if there are other, any operational efficiencies that the school may be looking to put forward to fund their pay plan.
All right. Go ahead. I have a couple, so follow one to Nick. On the slide where you added up all the asks, and you mentioned the $500,000 again, so it would appear that the school asked for 3.7 million, and this budget includes a half a million for them, right?
That's correct.
Right, okay. So just, and then, the other little surprise, you kind of prepared us for the revenue was going to be very flat, but then you had a slide where it showed the revenue growth was actually quite robust. Was that a surprise to, it was a surprise to me. Was it a surprise to you all?
The, not necessarily, Mr. Quinn. The overall revenue growth was not necessarily, that specific slide also had the new real estate tax increase of an additional 750, as well as the meals tax increases. So, not necessarily, that slide also, Mr. Quinn, includes not necessarily new discretionary revenue. That was, that was all revenue, and when I mean all revenue, EMS billing, as an example, is healthy. That's what we call, let me see, let me find that slide for you, Mr. Quinn.
That's it?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. So you'll see there charges for services, 702. That's not necessarily new discretionary revenue. It's revenue for EMS billing that will help support, again, the EMS staffing. The others are more modest. The Commonwealth of Virginia is also in this overall revenue number, Mr. Quinn. It's not necessarily what we call our discretionary revenue. That number will actually be in your budget books.
And so, this 4.9 million, that includes the increase in the property tax and the meals tax, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's still, it's a lot, it was a lot. I was surprised it'd be 4.9 million. Even if you take out the addition, it's still a lot of, sure, it went up quite a bit.
Specifically like in things like sales, and then, you know, as we said, recover cost, Commonwealth of Virginia, some of the federals in that number, too.
Mr. Whitlow, first of all, I'd like to express my appreciation to you and staff. I know that the last couple of months have been arduous, and I just want to say thank you, Mr. Carter, you and your staff, and the admin staff. One observation, Chris, I was just flipping through our notebook. I am not seeing the departmental budget detail that we usually get, and I would like to request that.
Sure. We typically hand that out as part of the budget work sessions, and we'll have that again, more detail in terms of the line items. The line items should be there year-over-year, but we will provide that detail.
Typically, the budget book has that in it when we get it, the departmental line items.
I think it should have the line items in the budget.
Yeah, Ms. Smith, it's in a different location this year. The line items are in the appendices tab.
Okay, I didn't flip back far enough.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize.
No worries.
You know, I've got to have my information.
That's right. No, the line items, the line items are all there, and they'll be online for everyone to see.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Chris, thank you for your presentation. I know you've been burning the midnight oil, because I've seen your car up here in the parking lot. I'm just curious, where do we stand in the delinquent tax collections from last year? What's that figure now approximately?
We can give you that figure. I'll defer to Mr. Carter and finance staff specifically. Of course, that changes daily with the collections. We've been monitoring that very closely, Mr. Carter, over the last few weeks. We haven't felt really, really good about the numbers. We were looking at even numbers last week as part of our revenue projections, and it's been more painful this year. And so, we're not, we're being conservative on our percentage of revenue collections for next year. We've actually backed that down some because there is a softening in the market, and we're recognizing it.
What do you think the number is? Is it 2 million, 2.5?
I would hesitate, Mr. Carter, and like I said, we can, we can get you another more exact number, maybe in time for next week's work session.
I would like to know as we move forward.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All right, I'd like to take a moment and, I'd like to take a moment and thank staff as well as the school for their time that they put into this. I know that budget time is, takes up a lot of time. It's a very arduous task, and it's hard on everybody's nerves, and, but anyway, it's something that has to be done, and we've got a lot of homework here to do, Board. We've got a lot of reading to do, and we got, it's our turn to burn the midnight oil now and see what's going on. So with all that being said, again, I thank staff and all of you for your time and your job that you do for the county. And so, I will adjourn the board meeting until Tuesday, March the 18th at 3:00 for our regular Board of Supervisors meeting. And Board, if you have any questions, get in touch with Madam Clerk, and she'll get, she'll compile all those questions and get them to staff so that they will be, be ready for our budget work section next Tuesday. I hope you all have a good week. We're not going to have a Tuesday meeting because, I mean, a Thursday meeting because you've got enough to read to get you through that. Thank you.